Um. Let me just direct that directly first and then kind of describe what our damage team would do. I believe that the primary damages will be in increased personnel. About eighty-five percent of the typical school districts cost are in personnel. You're going to need extra counselors, should have addiction counselors. They'll need to be extra teachers. They'll really need extra personnel throughout the school system. Damages would also include training for teachers, service personnel, counselors, on how to deal with the problem. There are two areas that drive what we think will be two of the greatest areas of damages. And let me caveat that our damage team hasn't gone in yet to analyze a county. So what, and I'll describe that in a minute. So I can't project exactly what model they will come up with until they've had a chance to study it.
And that's a good question. Piggyback on that, there is no model for boards of education yet.
None.
For the city of Miami or any, obviously, model that has been created yet.
Yeah, you've got the Miami School District for their county. And I talked to the attorney that filed there and told him about our damage team, asked him what they were doing, that maybe we could share information. They didn't have damage experts. So they're kind of at the forefront of saying, hey, this is a legal claim.
Are they filing independently? Are they filing as a class action?
No, they filed as one school district, the Miami School District. There's another group that may file for Chicago. They're affiliated, Miami and Ohio.
And I could say, I mean, as far as what's happening with the settlement, we right now, or there's a scramble of those that have filed to pull out of that settlement. Our county, for instance, here, the county commission has moved to pull from that class action. So they're going ahead separate from, separate apart from any of that. So they're out of that. And that's what we would, you know, probably need to do.
That's an excellent point. Depending on how they pleaded and what defendants they named, a lot of them got forced into this federal court.
Right.
And most of them went back out of it, or a lot of them.
Can I play devil's advocate? These big pharma companies that are being, you know, paying out millions of dollars, okay? What happens if these large pharma companies decide all to take out bankruptcy? You know, if they all take out bankruptcy, then there is no money. Even, you know, the damage is already been done, but the market being flooded with the drugs. And then if they drop, you know, because after a while, you can only get, you know, you can't get blood out of the tourniquet. So you can't, you know, they can pay so many millions of dollars and then eventually they're going to say it's not worth us being in business and declare bankruptcy. And then where does this put the lawsuits and the settlements to all these cities, states, school systems and what have you? There is no money.
You just become part of the bankruptcy and it's left to the liquidated damages.
Distribution.
Yeah. Let me answer that question and then if I could get back and quickly address that other... No, I tell you, we're getting, I'm just trying to make sure I get everything. I'm used to standing before a judge and it'll let you have it if you don't get every question answered. So I'll try to do that. Pharma has filed bankruptcy, the main manufacturer. It's owned by the Sackler family. They are all getting named personally. They've offered around nine billion and they're handing their company over. And they're looking for personal immunity. Well, they derive so much money from this that companies, the plaintiffs aren't willing to let them go for that. But that shows you, there is a limited amount of money that Pharma has. So you file a complaint, you want to file a claim in that bankruptcy court to get a share of that. Now, a lot of the defendants are large, large companies. Pharma was a family-owned business. You've got Johnson &amp; Johnson, CVS. So a lot of the defendants will not only have a huge amount of insurance, but have substantial net worth. But any defendant can only pay so much. And now, so how do you, how do you make sure that you get the money that you're entitled to and get in line and receive your share? Well, that gets back to the gentleman's question on damages. There'll be two areas, primary areas of damage. One are the NAS syndrome. And those are children whose mothers were addicted to opioids when they were pregnant. The children with NAS syndrome, if they're at the one end of the spectrum, their behavior is uncontrollable, extremely difficult for school systems to bust them. One in Canal County shut the bus down. I mean, they can be uncontrollable. Very limited learning abilities and substantial behavior problems. But that's at the end of the spectrum. Now, you start coming back, if that's a ten, there are going to be nines, there are going to be eights. I mean, this is a channel flowing through the school system. So identifying them and the flow that's going to be coming for years is a major part of the damages that a school district will have. Another area that school districts have significant damage are parental opioid abusers. In a lot of counties, a third, thirty-three to forty percent of children being placed in foster care are due to the parental opioid abuse. When you talk to teachers that have faced that, they, these children have absenteeism. They have the trauma from living with parental parents that abused and then getting changed over to foster parents. They may move to a different school district. Before they go to a different foster care, they may be sent across town or to another city to grandparents. So the upheaval from parental opioid abuse is staggering. And the American Psychiatric Association has a study that parental opioid abuse causes profound effect on the mental wellness of a child. And so our experts need to prove, how does that correlate? And more teachers, more staff? That's something that I can't answer.
One of the things, when you're talking about damage, I'm just thinking about my son in his classroom. The teachers say that sometimes there's just two or three students who have gone through stuff that's traumatic, dealing with drugs and everything. And their focus has to be on those students, the rest of the students don't get taught.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that is, how to correlate that in your damage model, but the damage is not just with that little kid and extra staff.
Oh, absolutely.
All those other kids are not getting that quality of education because the teachers have to deal with these little kids. So it's not just these little kids, it's the entire school.
Sure.
Because you can't focus.
I'm sorry, let me give you an example that we can reduce into a monetary is that this board has created the Back to Basics program, almost specifically drug babies. I thought that was just a off-the-cuff term. It is an actual medical term. I did not realize that.
Yeah, NAS.
And this board of education has spent over $200,000 in salaries and additional salaries, personnel, fixing the area for we're actually utilizing. And it's almost exclusively, the Back to Basics program is for those students who are so out of control that we simply can't, we can't deal with them in the regular classroom. We can only have eight. So it appears to me, and I think, Dor, we have two more postings, so we'll spend well over $300,000 specifically as it relates to this very, very issue. So you multiply that by county, state, and what we are dealing with. I think we can give you a model, at least we could start a productive discussion, Michael.
What about trans? Like we're sitting here.
There's so much, that's what we're saying.
We've got a whole school full of troubled kids because of this.
And I guess to bring this back around, we all know, you know, that there's some damages there. We all know what's in front of us, the litigation's there. From our standpoint, it would really not be smart to not jump into any sort of litigation.
That's what I, that's...
And it doesn't cost us anything to do that, so we need to jump in there. So I guess at this point, rather than, because we've gone through this and we understand where we stand, we understand what it is, if I can ask that, you know, through the president, if we can get Dr. Manchin and the staff to put out a request for proposal from attorney, you know, all the law firms that would be interested in this litigation in a fairly short time. I don't want it to be, you know, a month from now, but if you put it together where there's, you know, letters of interest in 14 days, we can bring the law firms in and we as a board can interview the law firms, pick a firm.
I think there are three firms, if I'm not mistaken, that have been proposed that...
But I disagree with doing that. We just put it out for all firms.
No problem.
Because I don't want the school board association to say, these are our three. You know, I want it to be, you know, fair. There are tons of litigation specialists out there that are going, and no offense to you, but...
No, 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 no.
You know, I want to make sure that, you know, someone doesn't come in and say, well, you know, they had three and they picked one out of the three. There are tons of firms out there, let's put it out, let anyone wants to send it in, those three can send it in, there may be 10 or 12, we can interview them.
And I think, and it's a good point, Gary, it's an excellent point. And certainly Gordon, you can finish up here, but kind of a postscript to some of the things you're saying is that really the intent of this evening was to open the discussion and that Harrison County, get out front in this whole process. I know the board feels strongly about that. I think in order, somewhere down the line, I think the taxpayers of Harrison County would have a right to hold us accountable if we were not in line and there was a, some sort of judgment in Harrison County. So where were we? Well, we weren't. And that's my worst fear and I know I'm speaking for the board and I certainly don't have to speak for this board. They understand that. So that's what I was hoping to accomplish, just open up a productive discussion, which I thought you, you know, you touched on several of the issues. If you want to finalize some of the, and then per the request of the board, and I'm assuming, Mr. President and the rest of the board, that Gary's request is...
Yes, yes, I agree with that.
Okay, let's say you throw it open to 10 or 12. That doesn't mean...
It won't be 10 or 12, we're just, and I have to sit out and figure it out yet.
I'm just saying who we...
I'm just using the number that he threw out there. But there's nothing to say that we can't come back to Mr. Lane's company or whatever. But what I'm saying is, the three that are, the big three firms that are, I guess, out there that are checking everything out, they probably have gathered more information than a lot of individual, small law firms.
I think what they've done, Doug, and that's a good point, and I certainly don't want to speak for Gordon, I'll let him do the speaking, but what they've done is they've taken the leadership in understanding, this is, as you can see tonight, we've pretty well cleaned the room out. Gordon, you did an excellent job because it was, it's a very complex, it's a complex issue. But the issue, and I was saying that jokingly, by the way.
I'd rather have him clear out to be asleep back here, so...
It's a complex issue, but it is an important issue. And I, based on this discussion, you've heard the discussion, is there, and I'm going to let you close.
I would like to say something for information on this whole thing. And I'm not going to take credit for this, but I was there. It was a board member from Morgantown, Monongalia. We were at a conference where, what was his name, Super, what's that?
Super.
Yeah, that was there. And we were at this thing and the governor actually had his newly appointed opioid crisis guy there. The man stood up and said, and he was saying how, you know, some of these lawsuits, 66 million. And the man from Morgantown stood up and said, are the school boards being compensated in any way with these settlements? And it was like, boom, everyone was like, oh, my gosh. And then I stood up because they were also talking about the grant program that Huntington was getting that I gave you all, I forget what it was called. That's why I wrote it down. What was that, that all the EMS people that have to deal and they were receiving this federal grant money?
Yeah.
So as a conference there, everybody looked at him and said, we want to know as Board of Educations in the state of West Virginia, what direction are you going with this? Now, with that being said, you verified that we were the first people at that meeting to even bring it up because there's not even one in the whole entire country. And I really don't think anybody has, as he said, knows how to approach this from a Board of Education standpoint. Do we fall under the county commission? Do we fall under the state? And I just really think that we have to understand that there's nobody in the country, as you just said, that has actually come up with a model for a Board of Education. I mean, not even Miami, the one that did file.
They just filed, yeah, that's true.
So from this training we were at and a bunch of Board of Educations looking at him, that's right when he called you, and I guess he called three other people, and then that's when the three firms called you. And all I am saying is, I think as a Board of Education, we have to understand, we know there are all damages out there. The problem is, is nobody ever had the light bulb to say, you know what? The school system is actually the one really suffering. I know everybody's thinking state, city, that, you know, that EMS, hospitals, but no one ever really thought about who was really suffering. And I think as a Board of Education, we have to understand, every single thing you're saying is all brand new. Not one single person in the country has done this yet. And we have to keep that in consideration when we look at proposals or even if they're worth it, if we should be under the county, you know? Since our county, with our county, how would that work? Like say if the county won a settlement, are they required by that settlement procedure to give X amount to the Board of Education? X amount to the hospital?
No.
No, they would be, they would be their own entity.
We're separate.
So the Board of Education is literally not in any one of the state, like, you know, our state gets $66 million. They aren't required to give the state Board of Education. So the Board of Education, and that's what I am saying, it is literally branded. And we'll be the frontier Board of Education in the whole entire country doing this. And I think we just have to keep that in mind. And this all came from the grant that the EMS in Huntington received. And what is that, and we think our teachers should receive that. They, I mean, I know it's hard on EMS when they go and they have to revive somebody, but it's just as hard on our teachers when they go in to teach ABC and two plus two. That's not what they're doing. They're dealing with students that are the victims of this. And that is how this whole conversation started, is how our EMS and everybody else is getting relief for dealing with this, why not our teachers? And I kind of wanted to clarify with you how this all come up, it came up because I know he called you suddenly after that and then you called Dr. Manchin. But it's really compelling to me that you're, or it's amazing to me that you're telling me there's not even a model in the whole entire country with this.
No.
I think that's amazing.
I was amazed. I'll tell you how I came up with the legal theory and the proposal is that articles started surfacing that the tobacco settlements didn't go toward any individuals that were suffering from lung cancer or addicted to cigarettes or prevention programs. It just got doled out politically to different groups. And there was a general consensus, particularly by the judge involved, that opioid settlements should go to individuals and entities that are directly engaged and directly dealing with individuals that have been affected by the opioid epidemic. And I, what kind of turned a light bulb on for me is when I chaired that task force, I asked if I could attend a weekend teacher conference, just sit in the back and just see what they said were the problems. And at the time, their compensation was low and we were trying to get that up. And a teacher got up and he taught junior high, he worked two jobs, he had two master's degrees, he had to work a second job so that both his daughters could get through college. And he thought the biggest problem in education was not souring, but he said that he stood in front of students and it just broke his heart. You see students that have abusive parents, sexually abusive, and what do you do? You can go to your counselor, you go to Child Protective Services, but ultimately, it's not a real answer. And so I thought, nobody deals with these problems like teachers.
Well, that is what, all of a sudden, and I have to find out his name from Morgantown because it was just like, all of a sudden, the room lit up and everybody looked. And, you know, teachers were also, there were principals saying, well, I've had to add this many special education teachers since in the last few years. You know, my mind is kind of turning and twisting a little bit here regarding this whole situation. In your opinion, where do we fit in? Or in any type, like, if you were going to file something, what would you file and where? Like, would you file with the state, would you file against companies? I mean, where would you file? Like, where do you think we fit in for damages?
Okay. I think in federal court, there'll be a couple cases filed and it will be years before a real damage model emerges from federal courts. It just moves slow. And I think that West Virginia school districts will get lost in the shuffle. They're not big population centers. Big national firms are not going to send a A1 damage team down here when the big money is in counties, cities and hospitals. It's going to be harder for school boards to prove damages. Parental abuse causes all sorts of disruption to a student. Who is going to translate that and spend the kind of money it will take to say, these are the dollar damages from that? It will take a major, major effort.
I was just going to say, for instance, that's a little harder to calculate because the model, you have to spend a lot of time.
Yes.
But I, as a county commission employee, you know, run the community corrections, I deal with the jail bill. That's something palpable. I know that at the start of this, our jail bill was a million dollars a year and now it's $2 million a year. That's a, that's a hard number that is easy to calculate on what the cost of the county is. A lot easier than us saying, you know, the emotional damage. So, you know, I don't want to say that we're going to jump, we may jump out there and get something, but it's not going to be the same volume of the cities, counties and...
I think it will...
It's going to be a much smaller pot.
It will be smaller and more difficult to prove. You're not the big, low-hanging fruit. And these national law firms, a county in West Virginia, when they're looking at huge counties, cities, a small school district in West Virginia is, it's not going to be big on their radar screen.
That's why we're last to the party.
So, and that's why I'm asking you, where do you think we fit in?
Okay, let me tell you what, how I believe you, the best way to fit in. About four or five months ago, I put together a team. The lead is Dr. Richard Salmon. He is, he is, if not the, certainly one of the foremost experts in the country on public school finance. And that is the expert needed. He has done 27 studies on the impact of various factors on the finances of a school district. This will be a study on the impact of the opioid epidemic on the finances of a school district. He's eminently qualified. I, when I chaired a task force for Governor Caperton, hired him as our national expert. So I know Dick Salmon well. He's written the lead textbook and treatise on public school finance. And so he's on board. He's actually ready to get started once we sign up a county. He's brought in the Alexanders. They have published the lead treatise on American public school law. And so Dr. Salmon has retained the Alexanders. The other members, and I think that a damage expert is great, but unless you've got somebody that knows that school system, that has worked with superintendents for 50 years and knows the public school finance inside out, I don't think you've got a strong damage report. And if you don't have strong damage witnesses, you don't get much money. I mean, if defendants look at you and say, well, gosh, you don't have great experts. Let's just go to trial, how bad are you going to hurt me? Well, if you're geared up in spades, they don't want to take that risk. And so until you've got a damage report in spades, you're not really on the radar screen nationally, but you simply won't get a substantial amount. Now, the other two members of our damage team is Dan Selby, who is a CPA. He's been a damage expert in West Virginia for 50 years. He, to me, is the best. And also a statistician that both Dan and our statistician worked on the opioid litigation when West Virginia sued and brought its suit against the opioid companies. So we've got a damage team that has Richard Salmon, the foremost finance expert in the country, the Alexanders, a damage expert and a statistician that have worked in, that are very experienced and have worked in opioid case with opioid experience.
I understand that. And I think, I think what my question is, and I understand this, or who on your, who's on your team and when we accept proposals? My question is, before we even ask for proposals, where do you think we fit in? I mean, I could sit here and say, yeah, let's hire an attorney and let's sue. Who are we going to sue? Where are we going to sue? Where do you think a Board of Education fits in? If not, I mean, truthfully, what we could do is sue the county, if not this county, I'm saying if that county got a settlement.
The mass litigation?
Yeah.
For a portion, I'm just saying where do we go?
The state.
Yeah. The, I think you fit in best in the West Virginia mass litigation panel. And let's suppose you file a complaint in Harrison County Circuit Court. That case will get moved to the mass litigation panel because there are other opioid cases there. There are quite a few counties, cities and hospitals there. And that case will move quickly.
So we want to make ourselves, you're saying, a, like a sublet. We want to be one of the sub receiving, you know, like under a bigger national umbrella.
If I were, I think your best course of action is to file your own lawsuit in Harrison County Circuit Court, get moved to the mass litigation panel.
Explain what a mass litigation is. Explain what a Mass Litigation Panel is to me.
Okay. The Mass Litigation Panel is a panel set up by the West Virginia Supreme Court. It's got three trial judges and three settlement judges. And I've litigated there before, and their cases go fast. So we file a complaint, we get moved to the Mass Litigation Panel, they will set a scheduling order. And so your expert opinions have to be in by March the 4th. And boy, when they say they have to be in March the 4th, they need to be in March the 4th. And then the other side has to provide their expert opinions within a certain date. And then you have all these discovery of their experts, our experts. It's an expensive process. But you will do much better in West Virginia Mass Litigation Panel than getting dropped into a law firm that represents Chicago and Miami, in my opinion.
Well, when you say mass litigation, I wanted to make sure that wasn't like, you know, a mass settlement, like, you know, like what Harrison County Commission actually pulled themselves out of. You're talking, that is actually hard on the court system.
Yeah.
That will see what, okay. So, once it goes there...
Then you have to name your experts, give the other side your expert opinions, your filing motions, they're going to depose your witnesses and our expert opinions, and it'll all go very fast, because part of their goal is to put you on such a fast timeframe that it forces the parties to settle. And I think that's where you'll do best.
That's what I wanted to know, was a path. I mean, we could sit here and talk all day about who's experts, where it is, what settlements. I wanted to know a path, and then you just explained that to me. Because there are so many different things and so many different ways that we've been told. I do have to tell you, I have, I'm getting two different feelings from you, like, you know, obviously, we are...
I'm not putting you to sleep, am I?
No, 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 not at all. I find it very interesting. You say that we're very small, we're going to get lost, and all this stuff, and then at the same time, I hear you saying you have all these big experts willing. And so I'm just a little confused on, you know, we're small, and we're going to get lost with all those big national things, but yet, there's this whole team, and I just sort of...
Okay.
I'm trying to get a vibe for the whole thing on what you...
Okay, okay. The, if you go with a firm that is litigating in federal district court, they will have cities, counties, hospitals, where the big money is, that they've already got the damages proven. And I think this Board of Education or others are not going to get a real serious damage workup, because the money's elsewhere. And these big firms, I don't think will put the money into a damage for a county board. Now, if they do, then you need to find that out. Now, why would I put in money, which would be a lot of money? I believe, and I know the school system well enough, that, and I'm from West Virginia, I'd like to see school districts in West Virginia get their fair share. I also need to cover our costs and make money on it. So, we will bring in a group of damage experts that I don't think anyone else will bring in. And if you're doing an RFP, you know, I'm happy to participate, and I stay completely out of whatever decision process you come up with, and I'd like to participate in that. But I think that, to me, the primary question is, you get in a Mass Litigation Panel, it goes real fast, who's your damage expert? What opinion can you generate? Otherwise, you're going to get crushed.
Why are they looking at, like, what timeframe for damages? Are they looking at like a 40-year? Because it's not what damages we had the last two years. I mean, we still have these kids just entering.
Yeah.
Was a 40-year damage control?
You need to look into the future. You need to project. And so if you're looking at firms, I would focus on, every, all 3,000 cases in the country have two issues. What's the defendant's conduct that caused this? That is the same for all 3,000 cases. The second issue is what damages can you prove? Now, if you go with a firm, they should be able to name their damage experts. You should be able to call their damage expert, hey, when can you start working on our case? If they can't give you a name, then they really haven't gotten into the damage part of the case.
Well, I just, I just wanted to know. I mean, there were a lot of general questions, and I have to thank you, you clarified everything for me very, very well. Thank you.
And Gordon, if I may, and I think small, Kristen, in the sense that if you go to federal district, there'll be a whole bunch. Is it Richmond? It would be in Richmond Federal District Court, Richmond, Virginia?
Well, no, right now, the main MDL case is still in Ohio, outside of Cleveland. They're talking about referring it out.
I think the state of West Virginia, he's generally, not Harrison County, I think West Virginia is just a smaller state, and would not attract the same kind of firepower it's going to take for damages and show damages at the federal level. They're going to go to Chicago, New York, and things like that. I think that's what he meant. But listen, I think this board has, my intent tonight, and again, was to at least apprise the board of what's available. I think you did an excellent job. Now, the board will give me direction as to what we do and how we do it. I appreciate you taking the time to come up from Charleston.
Thank you very much.
And enlightening us. I think that probably Harrison County, next time you go anywhere, Kristen, you will be the smartest woman in that room when they start talking about opioids. I believe that.
I just think we have to ask questions.
No, I mean sincerely, what we just now know, that we didn't know about an area.
But I still think that we need, if we're going to do something, we still need to put out an RFP.
And I think, that's my question, when are you going to ask on that? When you put out one, what are you going to ask?
We're going to ask questions like, what you're asking.
Okay. And that's probably why I said, that's probably why I said it. I wanted to make sure that we were putting out the right questions and what we wanted to know.
We're going to ask them what their experience is, you know, what their plans are.
Can't you send out a questionnaire? If they're interested, they'll answer the questions if they're really serious about...
I don't know how many firms are situated to address this issue.
But the ones that are, we'll send them back. Okay? And then, at that point, then you could, because otherwise, you know, they're going to say, well, this isn't really anything I'm interested in, throw it away.
With the vast majority, don't have the firepower.
Right, exactly. So...
I think what I've gained...
And we should see what Mr. Lane also...
What I've gained from all this is that while there may be an opportunity for us to glean a little bit of money from this, it's not going to be substantial, it's not going to be a very substantial amount.
I wouldn't say that. I think it will be substantial. And the reason I believe that is because Dr. Salmon and Dr. Alexander know the school system inside and out. They will come to Harrison County, work with the finance director, and really examine this school system. I think they will be able to take that American Psychiatric Association. He's done 27 studies nationally. He knows how to do this. One of the answers to your question is, everything in the education system drains money away from the average kid. It's just kind of the nature of the problems that arise. So part of that, I mean, Dr. Salmon knows that well. What you're going to need is more personnel. If you've got three behavior problems, maybe they should be in a separate classroom with a separate teacher. You've got to educate them. But what their damage expert and what our damage report should do would be to compensate you fully for the problems the opioid epidemic causes to you. Now, you get money to educate students, but this opioid problem with NAS children, that's money that's not part of educating children, it's caused by the opioid problems, these behavior problems. A lot of them come from a drug abuse. You're going to have to somehow get more personnel to take care of them. Now, that's...
That's in a nutshell, and I think that's exactly where we are, and that's where we're going to have to make a difference.
And I think the teachers that we have have to be emotionally...
And if I can ask that to go further, and of course, we don't have anything where we can vote on, but maybe a suggestion, I don't know if the board, rest of the board even agrees, but there's going to be a certain amount of firms that are doing this, and that will probably apply for that. But in the meantime, we won't have anything, we're not going to have a bunch of money tied up or anything tied up, it's going to come on the back end. But maybe if we spent just a small amount of money on the first, and maybe ask, because we use Jim Harris, he's not going to be a person that is going to apply for that, and maybe he can assist us with the, putting out the RFP, and maybe advising us...
I already spoke it to you.
And Jim sits here, because he's not going to be one that's competing, and if we can get Jim to just kind of, you know, let us know what kind of questions we want to ask from a law firm, I think he could guide us, and it wouldn't be that much expense for him to just assist us. So we have him, because it's someone that we've used and we can trust that would...
Well, let me tell you my honest opinion, wrapping this up, and unfortunately, it'll be in the paper, we are very small. But if we're first in the country, we won't be that small. In fact, we'll be the headline on everything. So I think the quicker we act, if we want to go in this direction, we need to act ASAP. And that's my take on it, because we are small.
Agreed.
But if we headline, and we're the first, we're no longer small, we're actually the smart ones. So I just think that we need to take it from there and move on this as quickly as possible.
Well, that's why we had Gordon. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Like I said, I think now a little more than an hour ago, we're a lot smarter than we were an hour ago. So I appreciate you taking the time, and I will, based on the direction this board gives me, which I have some sense for where we are, we'll start moving in that direction. I think that we'd like to move with dispatch as soon as we can. So I appreciate, thank you.
Does Dr. Manchin have all your information, your law firm, all everything?
Yes, as he does. And if you've got a question, I'll leave that to the President of the Commission. You can give it to Dr. Manchin, he can ask me, and I know I confused you at a certain point, and so I guess my overall, I think that when you show up, you're going to have education experts, that their experts will know, these guys are the real deal, they're the leaders. That's where you're going to get the financial compensation.
Is that decision going to be made, then, in this mass litigation court there? Will that be the decision, or is it those three judges who wants to make that final decision?
You file a complaint, it goes to the Mass Litigation Panel. Then it's like any court case. If others settle, if other school districts settle, you don't have to settle. You can say, we want to go through trial. And typically, you don't get a really strong settlement till right before trial, and they know you have worked up a very strong case. Yes, yes.
Well, listen.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll be getting, however this whole thing works out, I'll let everybody know.
Oh, thank you.
Moving on, we have our first delegation, our only delegation this evening. Mr. Hammack and Mr. Solers, if you guys would be so kind to come and present on the introduction of the Freight Farm for United High School to support the VOAG program.
You may remember me from two years ago, I came asking and begging for a greenhouse for United High School, they didn't have a greenhouse. And I want to thank you all for approving that greenhouse. We got set up in the spring of last year.
We have one for the...
Oh, well, that's just two copies. There are two different copies explaining the system.
And archery.
And one copy, the short notes, and one I'm trying to...
You asked for archery too, correct?
Yes.
How did that?
It is great, it's part of their love, it's gotten students into hunting, it's gotten them into safety courses. I'm not very involved in the archery, but I've spoken with the DNR officer, to have a water festival, and he's hoping to come and start a safety course and school training, and possibly this very different curriculum. So the scheduling's a little difficult. They felt fast, it felt very nice. So the greenhouse that we have had, we've been able to send starts, thousands and thousands of garden variety, many starts, to... Hold to our students, and some of our teachers and their families, at no cost to the students whatsoever. This winter, I'm from Evolution High School, at United High School, so I love theirs. I have students who are having many indoor gardens for greens this winter, some in their bedrooms, some in the kitchens, some in hallways, because that's only from the half. And these students, they've never had the experiences in their life before, they're green, they're making stories of the old times, and they had to do that. But the parents dropped that tradition, and I'm trying to get a start back up again, and these students have been able to provide food for the parents, just a little bit. Mr. Solers has come to Wordy United High School with our new VOAG program. He's a half-time through Chinsen High School and us. And with the consolidation, possible consolidation of elementary schools, and the move of United High School to another location, our greenhouse has set the concrete and rolled it down camped out. So what we're proposing is a mobile greenhouse that you can purchase at any time. This greenhouse would be able to move from one place to another with one flatbed truck. It's a completely contained system, where it would hydroponically grow up to 8,000 eight-here plants every month.
How much can you grow right now?
Right now, I have, actually today, we've been planting a quarter of the greenhouse right now, that little hazel, about a week's worth of salad.
Right, could you plant more of the mobile one of, than out of the stationary?
Absolutely.
Really?
Absolutely. We've been talking with Mr. C, and with the Freight Farm representatives for, since August. We've had some conference calls, we've had some direct calls, many emails, they're very hard to manage. And Mr. C believes that we can provide 41% of what the schools purchase in lettuce. And lettuce might not be, salad's not a very big, popular topic, especially in the schools, but Harrison County Schools, or the five high schools in United programs, spend over $21,000 a year just for us. We would be able to provide 41% of that if our Freight Farm was operating at 90% efficiency.
I've got a, yeah, a couple of questions. One, is this is great, because I think it was this board's intention with moving the school, that we had planned on putting a greenhouse there. However, if you think this is a better solution than the greenhouse, it may be better for everyone all the way around. I mean, is it a better, that's my question, is, are you doing this because, with this mobile unit, because you don't think you'll get the greenhouse there, or it's better than the greenhouse?
No, I fully understand the board's devotion tonight, I appreciate that.
Right.
It's not in fear that we won't get a greenhouse.
So that's why I'm just asking, I don't want you to be doing this, you know, to think that, yeah, we're not going to get it, but if this is a better alternative than the greenhouse...
No, it is.
Or is it a complement, in addition to the greenhouse?
I mean, if we were to put the greenhouse there too, you would obviously probably take that as well. But my other question is this, I don't know what you can do, because once we move to that facility, from my understanding, we're going to have some additional space, correct, into Adamston, when it goes into that building? We had talked about possibility that we won't be filling up the entire school, correct?
Yeah, we don't envision that.
So, I mean, is there, let's say, the top floor there, is that something that would be usable space for your program, if needed be? I mean, in addition to this?
Oh, sure.
I mean, is there, I don't know whether you can grow something there, you know, some indoor grows in those areas or not?
We can do that. Some of the hydroponic systems that other schools in the county, agriculture programs have ran, they're excellent for the school system. They're excellent for classroom and for experimentation. They're not very good for real-life production.
Okay. I just want to make sure, if we have that spare room, and there's something where you're producing 40% of our lettuce, and there's a way to produce... and there's a way to produce 100% of our lettuce, then we can use that room and grow lettuce, right?
Are you limited just to lettuce?
No, we can grow all sorts of greens.
Greens, herbs, kale was one of the big things.
Some root vegetables, but the larger the vegetable, less space you have within your fields.
What's good about this is it only has a 10 by 50-foot footprint that it would actually take up. It's basically a storage container. When I first found out about these was last year, I went to a workshop one Saturday to see a lady from, I believe it was out, she's from Pennsylvania, speak about the unit that her student purchased. She teaches a large school up there, and is actually the gifted VoAG teacher there, is the two leaves that she splits. And with this unit, it's state-of-the-art, it's based out of a company in Boston, Massachusetts that produces them. They are just taking off, and it's the future of farming. There are none in West Virginia at all, at this point. But it's completely self-contained, it's all computerized to where everything can be electronically monitored from anywhere on the earth, as long as you have connection, and wifi's up and working in the system. You can make your adjustments and things from there. So it would be teaching the kids about the future of agriculture. Plus, you have great control, 100% control over it, 365 days a year. In the past, when I've grown hydroponic stuff in the greenhouse at Lincoln, you're really limited to a small window, because once it gets too hot, everything dies. Once it, plus you're having to heat it in the wintertime to keep it going. There's a lot more variables there, whereas with this here being all contained and controlled, you'll have a guaranteed product to go with it. You will know what you're going to get, week in, week out.
And this lettuce is certainly more healthy than organically grown?
It is organic?
You can consider it organic. The prices we're looking at with Mr. C. was for iceberg lettuce.
Bad boy, iceberg.
Yeah, iceberg lettuce is delicious.
Well, I mean, romaine, it's got salmonella everywhere you turn.
No, I'm asking what you grow is organic, there aren't chemicals or pesticides.
No, no, no.
So what you will be growing is organic.
You use these risk trips and you throw a bunch of grass at-
The iceberg lettuce that the county currently purchases is extremely low nutritional value. We would be growing, what do you call it, fancier lettuce, your salad greens.
Well, with the produce house, leaving, I mean, I think you guys could get a lot more business, because I know a lot of people went to the produce house.
That was something else I was thinking about too. You're only in school so many months out of the year. This system, for a little bit, such as out there, running everything, it wouldn't take anymore to have it run through the summer, where kids could use that as part of their summer projects that they have to do, to where they could come in and help work there. Kids that don't have the opportunity to have a garden at home, or have things that they can do, which there are several of them out there, have no idea what they would like to do for a project. This could be something that they could be able to do to earn credit towards graduation, and to help do. And you could take that excess product that you're growing in the months that school's not in, and either donate to local food banks, or perhaps sell to farmers more of it, or to local restaurants and stuff.
I wonder if you could bring like a 4H in or other people to come in there, and like, if we're the only one in the state that would have one, bring outside other people in who-
Oh, it would definitely be a showcase for the county on this because, I mean, all kinds of organizations could come to see and learn from it.
Is anybody familiar with the Farm Bureau of West Virginia, Harrison County's Farm Bureau?
Yeah.
Harrison County is one of the largest farm bureaus in the county, in the state. I've been involved with them for the last two years, and doing teacher summer agriculture experiences. And they are looking for a student that has a state that has more farms and farming facilities and production facilities to tour in. So that's an option, you could have in-house elementary schools, children can come in from all over the county, plant their salad. They can count, they can harvest, or we can harvest and load, they can process, they can make their own salad. They can make their own, so that's just one other way to show a child that you don't just get all your food from the store.
And I may have missed this, this is mobile, and I may have missed in the beginning, mobile, correct?
It is if you keep it on a flatbed trailer. It can be, this can make it from water and electrical supply, just by unplugging and unscrewing those two utilities, and placed on a flatbed and moved, drove off to another facility. It must be on foundation of either gravel, asphalt, concrete, something immobile while it's rolling.
What would it take to supply 100% of the lettuce for Harrison County?
It would take just over two units, four, two units, and all of the ag programs have their own smaller hydroponic systems. They're much more expensive altogether aggregated than two of these systems would be.
You're asking for 27.5. Well, I'm looking at this, I'm a little confused on this grant writing, because I was gonna ask you about that, because typically, like you said, there's one vendor in Ohio. They should have given you a huge list of where you can get organic, green USDA funding for this. And I see on here, we have been in contact, well-versed in writing these grants, just a USDA grant. Requires 25% of the project, this amounts to 27.5, is that what you're asking? And the USDA gives the rest?
If we get the grants, to apply for this grant, which is the only grant that seems to be available to us to purchase a piece of equipment like this, for agricultural program. The system itself costs $110,000, that's the software, starting installation, they come, they set up a complete new unit, they make, custom made for the customer, and they deliver and train, so that's 27,000. One quarter of that is required to be covered with an in-kind donation or pledge.
So that's what you're asking us for, is 27.5 in-kind donation?
And we'd have to have that before we would be able to apply for USDA grants.
Then, the net cost of fully funding the project will cost about 80,000, that's not us.
That's not you, that's the remainder of what would be covered by the USDA grant, if we receive the grants.
Okay, so just to be straight here, what you're asking the board is for us to consider an in-kind donation of 27.5?
Yes.
Okay.
And I mean, in a perfect world, the fully funding of this project, without having to worry about tying up in a year and a half worth of USDA coming back and requesting the materials from us to be eligible for the grants, we'd be able to pay off this project within eight years if Harrison County were to fully fund the project. And it'd be self-sustaining from there on out. And that would include the $8,820 of Mr. C. would divert from spending outside of the state, outside of the country, to Mexico, to purchase lettuce, you can purchase it at your house. That $8,820 would only go out of country, it would be stayed in the county.
Let me ask, is this something like for the school lunches? If we'd save money on buying lettuce whenever they're having salads in there, we could, that we'd save money on that?
Yeah, that's what they're saying. Mr. C. is gonna buy off of them rather than buying off another vendor.
He spends over $21,000 just for high school lettuce, including middle school programs. We'd be able to buy $8,800 worth of that lettuce he would purchase from us, and it would run the system. Any, I wouldn't want to call it profit, we're not gaining anything else, it's just the students in the school system eating out of it. We don't know about that. Any of that excess money, once we maintain the system and get it to start the new cycle of harvest, that money would come back into our pocket and purchase another.
I'm just curious if you'd have like Panera or another restaurant set up, see if they'd be interested in it.
I'll tell you right now what my concern is, and it's not a negative concern, it's a real concern. Now, I know, like, being at the United High School graduation, that some students were there, some went back to their home school. You have students at United that are there for a year, two years. I mean, explain, do you have an ag completer there? What I'm concerned is you get this, and it becomes more of a tool for the instructors, because you have students coming in and out. Where compared to like a Lincoln or Liberty, you have a four-year program that, you know, the students are there all four years. That's my only concern with it, is that it's gonna be more of a project for you, where a greenhouse, now they walk in, they see flowers, they go home. But we don't even know if they're coming back to the school next year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so when I look at something like this, I look at something like this, because we, of course, we're gonna put one, and we never even consider not having one at United. But don't you really think this is a better model to be at a high school?
I think it's re-
It is a high school.
I think it's better with this, because you've got a different clientele that you're trying to reach, and you need to do some-
That's what I mean, you know what, it's worth every dime to me, that if a kid who's going there, that may be, you know, a discipline issue, maybe not. They may be, have problem within a regular classroom, but this is something that they can go to, and it's something they look forward to, and they're doing, and they're taking a part of it, I'm 100% behind.
But they're doing that now at the greenhouses, that, I mean, we've seen that success.
Right, but this is, I think for them, they're saying it would work better. And I think it's unique enough that it would excite those other students more so than your just your typical green-
And I'm not saying that in a negative way, I'm just wondering, as you as an instructor, that here you start this whole project, and then next year you don't even have the same students in there.
But you know what, what I'm appreciative of, is that at United High School, we put an emphasis on United High School, and someone who's teaching at United High School has the forethought to go out and try to do something over and above what any other high school would do.
I'm in favor of that.
And I agree with all that.
I have vision, I have vision you guys being able to supply, if it continues to grow, being able to supply more lettuce, or more vegetables, or something. I just like that you're not mailing it in, you're going out and looking for things that are different, that excite your eyes, and so I'm-
In essence, I'm bringing up Preston County's slaughter farm. They supply a lot to their own schools. So I think that this would be a perfect model for us, that could help us nutritionally, could help our students from a nutritional value standpoint, it could help us save some money over the long haul, and it would be a great educational tool for our kids in the Farm Bureau and VoAG programs.
They'd be able to graduate from the VoAG program with the skill, the talent, and the ability to run one of these facilities that they'll with their students within the whole state, from the West Virginia hands. And to come back to this, I'm only a customer loss. I think it'd be perfect for our program, because if you have transient students, then you're gonna have students from all five high schools, the major high schools, be able to come to our sixth high school, United High School, from their VoAG classes. Take a VoAG class from Mr. Solers, get the experience. So you're not just servicing United High School, because United High School services all other five high schools in the county. And it's optional for students to attend United High School.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't mean it in any negativity, I know we all have greenhouses, but when you're talking about producing, I just don't want it to end up being, you're, that you are handling it more than students. You know what I mean, because they're going in and out, and you're always teaching from ground one. I just wanted to make sure you felt this, you don't have a student in there for four years, learning and building on it, is all I was saying.
I just, I think this is the place to try it out, and I envision this at all the other high schools, because it's gonna be successful, and-
If you follow the news, Southwest, they had major flood issues earlier, reasons this year. You're gonna, I'm sure you've been personally, you'll notice produce, so if you're short-term, small produce, like-
Adam, it appears that this board desires help. Do you need the board to take some sort of action, at least show it in the board minutes?
Well, I would request that you put this on our next agenda, to put a vote for the funding.
27.5 or 21.5?
Well, I don't think it requires funding, what it requires is commitment.
And speaking with our- 27,500.
And while we're speaking with our finance department back here, just kinda off the cuff, apparently there may be $10,000 from the CTE.
There is.
The CTE that can be committed to that, so we're only looking at 17. I think it's a no-brainer.
And please don't think that I was negative in my comment. I mean, I think this is a fabulous idea, and I definitely applaud everything that they've said. I just wanted to make sure with students coming in and out, it wasn't too much of an undertaking for you. You know, with all the computer and 24 surveillance and all that stuff.
So you're asking for a commitment from us of 27,500 to get the project started?
I'm asking that, and it's very, I don't understand some shortages, but December 13th is the deadline for grants.
That's why we came here tonight, with the-
I think, when is our next board meeting, December 13th?
17.
17.
Do we have to take a vote for a commitment?
I mean, it's just a commitment, it's not funding.
Yeah, he, yeah.
What's that?
It's a pledge.
I mean, I think you have that, within your-
We talked about this, Adam, they were in my office the other day, and that was part of it, that if the board made it-
Because quite honestly, when we filed for grants-
That it reflects, and then they'd have to make a commitment, if you get the grant, then the commitment for the fund. Just a commitment, and I think the board minutes probably with the flag, that this board made a commitment.
But, yeah, all I'll say is, with any grant, the superintendent, you direct your staff to go forward with the grant, and then come for the funding afterwards.
That's my point.
Yeah, so you have the ability to say, yeah, go forward and file for the grant, and then we'll work-
Well, actually, when we talked the other day, and that says, we're coming to make sure the board's okay, which I think they are.
Because we don't approve every grant file.
No, we don't, but I would officially like to vote on this, on an agenda item specifically.
All right.
Hopefully, you can start your filing for your grants, I don't think there's any problem with that, as you said. But I want, I would like to have an official vote-
Yeah, if he gets the grant, then obviously the board has to make it, then the board has to take a vote.
So he really can't lose this year.
He can file for the grant.
We already talked, file for the grant.
With the pledge, that's all we're saying, is a pledge.
We're good.
Give him a second.
Now, I think if we were doing 110, that would be a different story, but he's just asking for a pledge of, what, 17.5?
Well, yeah.
The timing on this grant.
27.5. No, she said there's 10.
For the total of the 25%, I would rate that as 17.5, or the 10, you're fine, it's 27.5. Once the grant application goes in on December 13th, it will take one year before they award the grant. And then after that, a purchase of the unit will require six months lead time from the purchase of the unit to the delivery and the functionality of the unit. So we're looking at over a year and a half.
So we're not gonna get a test salad until next year sometime?
In two years.
Two years.
And we wouldn't appropriate money from this year's budget, we'd have to take it right to next year's budget.
Well, I was thinking of that, if we did that, get you moving quicker and get it, and then, but I don't know if that would impact the grant, if the money was already been funded, that was the only thing I would think.
Yeah, you couldn't buy it and then get, get-
And then get the grant and pay us back.
You can ask them, and yeah.
Actually, yes, we can.
But the other question is, we don't wanna get it now, put it on a pad, and then move it.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that, yeah, we would do-
I mean, that's a consideration, based on whether we get funding in a week or so.
Well, just a couple of weeks, so just hang in there, we'll figure that out.
But if you do find out in the meantime, that after that move, and the grant's coming six months from now, but you're reimbursed if it was paid for, then I would say come back.
We should do something about that.
I think you're gonna get this, just win.
But like I said, again, I applaud you, because I think coming with something like this, and researching something that's over and above what other schools do, is what we envisioned from United High School.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Your support and questions, thank you.
All right, good job.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay, superintendent's update.
Mr. Presser, we talked today, and I don't have any updates, y'all.
All right, moving on.
I know that upsets you.
Consent items, is there an approval for consent items?
Some would.
Mr. Hoag has made an approval, has made a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammack has seconded the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I moved on, do you have an update from United?
No, it was something that I discussed with you earlier. I know we were doing the lawn mowing services, and I was discussing with Frank on our way down here, when was the last time that we bid out our insurances? And we cannot remember it, since we got on the board six years, six years ago.
What insurance are we?
Building insurance, all of our insurance.
It's our liability insurance, we have to go with them. We've put property out before, but truthfully, no one can ever match what we do with Bram.
I think what you're talking about, I think what she's talking about is agent of record.
I'm talking about our schools and stuff like that.
Workers' comp.
Or you're talking about the agent of record?
The agent of record.
The agent of record, we don't pay, so we don't necessarily have to bid that out, so.
Well, is there a company? Who are we paying our insurance to?
Bram is-
No, Bram is our company for our liability and our property insurance.
Bremens.
So when we, there's no agent. So when we came on the board-
It's hard for a company to compete with the state policy.
Okay, so when we first came on the board, the three of us, we voted on dire insurance group.
To be our agent of record.
For?
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp, but he also does our Bram too. He's our agent of record.
Okay, I think that's what Ms. Messenger's referring to. Is that something that we should reconsider, bidding out again, is that a price that we pay them?
We do not pay them.
You do not pay them, okay.
It's not something that has to be bid out.
Okay.
So why would we wanna change at all?
So how did he get it, like, what, I mean, like, what is that process? Is she ultimately chose?
We went through a process where we bid it out every once in a while, but we don't pay anything. And everyone who deals with them has been happy, so we haven't done anything. But it's not something that's required, because it's of no cost to us. We just have to have one because of the crazy insurance laws, which-
Well, why wouldn't we- Well, why wouldn't we, um, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, there's a lot of insurance agencies in this county, I mean, to stay with just one, I mean, why wouldn't we just do it, just, just for the health of our community, basically.
I think the continuity, I think, well, I think the continuity for us is, is, is a good thing, I think you can talk to Mr. Winkie, I think he expresses that often to me. But, I mean, but it doesn't matter.
Well, if you put out another, eh, request for a proposal, I mean, can you put on that that you want to combine, just like we have it now? A request for.
Sure, sure.
I'm just saying, I mean, it was, it was brought to my attention and I just really, um, eh, I just think it's healthy, just like we did with the interest rates last year. I, you said you were going to rebid that out this year. I mean, we went down significantly by bidding it out last year regardless of what the end situation was, we went down significantly and made a lot of money off of our, I, I mean, I suggest we do that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something that costs us any money, so I guess that's why we don't really look at it, everyone's satisfied with who they're working with, but we could certainly work with someone else, it's just, we've got somebody local back.
I mean, it could be him again, it could be him again, all I'm saying is, I think it's healthy for a board of education representing the whole county to do this, just like the lawn mowing bid, just like whatever, I, I just think it, it's something that should be done.
Yeah, it's just, it's just hard to put it out for proposal because they're not, it's not costing us anything, so it's hard for them to say, what are they going to do, because by law we have to have certain things.
Do they make money off of it?
I'm sure they do with the insurance companies, but I don't, it's not something that.
But like, I guess to say, border risk management is BRIM, that's the state, that's the risk pool for the state, so we're in that, we're in that for the long haul, there's no cheaper than BRIM. So BRIM, then they, whatever comes from, doesn't come from us, it comes from BRIM to them. The workers' comp's different, I think we're.
Yeah, workers' comp, but we still don't pay.
We don't pay them, but it's brick street, so, I mean, as far as BRIM, I mean, but the agent of record, I think the first time we did it wasn't, it was only for workers' comp.
Right, it was, it was, it was. We've never bid out anything other than workers, the workers' comp.
Yeah, we don't bid out, bid out BRIM, BRIM just has a person in your county.
Right.
Well, we were just discussing that, we remember voting on that and seeing and that we hadn't seen it in six years.
Yeah, it has been very happy with what we have, so that's why we haven't done anything, I guess.
I, I just suggest representing the whole county and taxpayers that we do that. I, I mean, I've done it on other issues and I'm going to do it again on this.
Yeah.
Just because I think it's important for all of us that we do that instead of saying, oh, well, they're just happy.
They, I think the question is, Chris, we couldn't bid it out because there would, there is no cost, so you, how would you?
But see, my question is, why did we vote on it six years ago?
Well, eh, eh, if the board action, eh, I guess we could bring it back again, if you have somebody else in mind, just.
Why did we change a, agent of record?
Because we didn't have someone local and someone local.
And I think that, that was the key, cause I think that was, that was my first year.
That was our first year.
Yeah, that's, we were just like discussing this.
That's right, your first year was my first year.
And, eh, eh, and you know, and I'll add on to that, eh, so that I'm not, and it may think so, I'm looking just at insurance. My issue that I've had with the community care in our schools is the exact same thing, it's out of county. I have always felt that annually we should have local physicians bid that out, because we give it free, it doesn't cost us anything at all. The, our, our, the, the, the little med centers in our schools, I mean, we're providing a space, we're providing the students, they're paid, they're billing the insurances and Medicaid. All I'm saying is, I still think that is something, eh, that we need to bid out to local physicians. And so I just don't want anyone to think I'm pinpointing insurance or anything, I'm just saying, I think it's healthy for our board to do things like this. And, and, and I'd like to see, to see, I mean, I'd just like to see that done.
Well, how about the, the, eh, Chris, and Sharon and I sit down and, and I'll make a, a report to you in what probably the most feasible way of addressing your concern.
Okay, well, it's not really a concern, it's a question.
Well, no, but I think it is legitimate, eh, 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 at least put it back on the table, maybe dire again, eh, it may not, but at least open it back, it'll be a local, it'll be somebody around here. Eh, but let me talk to her and I'll put it on the agenda for discussion next, eh, next board, okay?
Okay, that's all, that's all I'm asking, I think it's something to look at.
I think that's legitimate, good question.
Okay, new business, annual request to authorize payment of Notre Dame employees for applicable, applicable professional development, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Ms. Messenger has made the motion to approve, is there a second? No second?
Second.
Mr. Hammerick has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
Yeah, what is this?
That's why you're here, still sitting here, Lola.
Wait a minute, why am I getting, eh?
We're getting funky stuff on our computer here.
What, what?
I'm getting something that says, are we voting electronically now?
No, it's always on there.
No, 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 no.
All that, okay. Oh.
I got an issue too.
Come look.
It's just the A.
Request authorized, it's, it's.
It's what she puts on.
It's asking us to cast the vote.
Oh, this is pretty cool, Doug would never be able to vote.
Not me either.
Yeah, it's a, it's a annual request to authorize payment and then when we went through the motion and we went through the discussion, it gives us the option to abstain, eh, eh, a yes vote or a no vote.
I seriously need my computer, I haven't had a computer for almost a year now, I can't even log in.
That's the first time, that's the first time I've ever seen that.
Listen, I can't.
I knew it has to be.
I need this.
Yeah, that's the first time I've ever seen that, and we're not going to do it that way.
It's been almost a year.
Alright, is there any discussion?
Well, while we're waiting to try to fix everything, can you tell us what it is?
Okay.
And what do they do for us?
And I was going to surprise you with a Christmas gift.
Oh, I'll tell you what.
Okay, okay.
We're a pass through, we're just a pass through.
Okay, alright.
The only way, the only way we have approval of you guys doing anything through payroll would be something like this, because they don't have contracts with us and things like the rest of our personnel do, so that's why she brings it up.
Okay, no further questions.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, that's what broke the wagon.
I already voted.
Everybody did, apparently we all did.
Well, I'm not, I'm, 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 that it's not working.
We're going to control this from here on in.
Apparently we all voted.
We know it's wrong, cause Doug voted.
We're going to win every vote, yeah.
A, that's the one we're on.
A, correct.
We're ready to go.
Yeah, we're ready to move on.
We already voted.
Hey, this thing's already done.
Congratulations.
Good job, Lola.
Alright, officially.
Wait a minute, okay, it's all.
You were the first electronic vote of the board of education.
Now we can move on to the next one.
Okay, I'm, I'm, well, I still have to call for the vote considering that.
I didn't, I didn't touch the button.
Right.
Yes, you did, it says it up there, yes, you did.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, out of state professional leave requests, is there a motion to accept the out of state professional leave request?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion, Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bus driver promissory notes, eh, is there a motion to accept the authorization for the bus driver promissory notes for Philip W. Heater and Roberta Murphy?
So moved.
I love when that happens. Mr. Hammerick, eh, or Mr. Doherty has made the motion and Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Washington Avenue parking project, eh, is there a motion to accept the low bid from Wolf's Escavating for the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars? One hundred and twenty-eight thousand, twenty-six dollars and three cents for the Washington Avenue project?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammerick has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
Yes.
What, what, where is this, this isn't about Washington Irving High School?
No.
This is the one right up the road here, we bought that.
Right behind the steam center.
Okay, oh, okay.
That area right there, we bought, remember we bought the houses and we, we demoed it, now we're going to put a, eh, eh.
This will give parking for some of our WI teachers and.
If, if, yeah, very well could.
And then like, it'd be board of education parking, so whoever. Right, right, now, I'm just, eh, just when eh, we had a PRA up there trying to visit him or, or going over there, trying to find a parking spot just as a visitor, it just, it's just a pain. So I, just having parking for the school would be, eh, tremendous.
Um, I don't think this is parking for the school, it's Washington Avenue and it's for the steam center. I am not voting for this because I think that once there's a need, right now we have all of this parking up and down the street and behind us that can be utilized for that. And I would much rather see something of parking up by WI that can be utilized, like you said, for visitors and PRA. I just don't think we need to do it till the need is a little more, I, I mean, I mean, there's parking up and down the street every day, right beside the steam center. And, um, I, I'm just not going to vote for this at this time, that's just my vote.
Is there a possibility that this could be accessed from both sides?
I mean, they're, they're looking into that.
We'd have to, that property, eh, we'd have to get the, eh, approval, we'd have to get approval to.
I mean, I would love it, like a key fob, like for the teachers.
I think there's a big wall, is it Jimmy on the back of the property?
Well, there's going to be a retaining wall, but we don't own the property, but.
So there's not access to WI, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I thought they'd have to walk around.
I, I just don't feel comfortable doing one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and it's not a big need right now, I mean, we've never had any event that lacked parking out here. Now, if that was for Washington Irving Middle School, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Well, you could put Washington Irving Middle School slash Steam Center, then.
There's no access, there's not a right of way and there's a wall, they have to go clear up on the block.
They have to walk from the parking lot that's up there on the hill now to the school, you know, what's the difference between walking there up the hill, I mean, it's broad as it is long.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess, um, I don't know, I just don't think.
I would ju, I mean, the only thing I would say is, because I, eh, that's exactly right, eh, it's, it's about the same, you got to walk up either way, one way and then down the other way. I would just say, and I'll, I'll, I'm in favor of it, but I would, I would like to at least, when we let them know that during the day, during school hours, that allow those teachers to park. Let them know that this parking is for you, eh.
Yeah, in fact, we'll.
Can, can we do the, like, the key fobs like we have out here?
Well, we talked about that, eh, eh, I don't know, I, I really don't, we talked about.
I think, I thought Joe, when he was going over the business.
Wait, where is Joe?
I, I think it's like, the parking lot is just like this and there's no way to put.
Oh, so you, okay, then answer these questions then.
Yeah, how many spaces, how many spaces are there for a hundred and twenty-eight?
We never see Joe, we never see Winkie.
Ten, so we're paying tw- eh, about thirteen thousand a parking lot.
The key fob thing, and how, how's that going to work? Well, eh, right now the design is, you're going to be, you're going to be pulling in over the, the new, eh, you know. Between there, there's not going to be, we're not going to be pulling in and, and parking, you know, side to side, you're going to be pulling in and backing out.
Have we done RCB's parking lot yet, I mean, we're, eh, has RCB's parking lot been completed?
No, no, it is not.
I, I mean, I just don't understand this, that we have a new city council in Clarksburg and I know for certain they own those lots that we're talking about and, and we should talk to them and put parking there. Because then that would service the school and it would, eh, also service the parents and everybody else that goes to that school. And guess what, we could just flip this around and if the steam center ever needs any parking, they can use the one up there. I, I mean, I don't know why.
The only difference I have is I'm not for putting anything more up there next to WI because I hope to get rid of it.
But then, eh, okay, but then don't say this is for WI parking.
Well, but, but it's still down here, so once that's over, it's still here, but if it's up there, then it's, it's not up there, that, I, I'm.
I'm just, I just think it's terrible there's not parking at WI's door, it's a dangerous neighborhood. We don't even have a need for this right here and you're still asking for students and parents and everyone to walk a whole entire block when what they've only wanted is parking right by their door. And that's what the parents have asked for and everybody, that makes it convenient and accessible. And the city now owns about two or three lots right there and I think we should explore that.
You know, we've, we have kicked this round for, ever since I, I've been on the board, you know, there, you know, why there's no more parking up at Washington Irving? There was not near that much parking at Washington Irving when it was a high school, when I was there as the principal and the other principal for me, you know. And, you know, I don't understand why we keep debating about buying more property, putting more parking in, because the underlying is, people always found a place to park. People will always, you may have to walk a little bit, but now we've added, eh, we tore that house down, we added parking there. Now we've got this, we're going to add parking there, eh, we have this building with a parking lot out here. I think we have more parking now for Washington Irving than we've ever had in the last, last thirty years.
If that's the case, I agree with you, I'm just saying, I don't understand that.
It was a, when I went there, it was a tri-pole school and every junior and senior drove and I don't remember parking issues.
I, I, I agree with all of you guys, eh, eh, everything that you're saying, and my only thing is, is first, we've never completed the parking at RCB, which.
We've already been, but we've allocated the money for that, correct?
We've discussed it, yes.
But we, it's allocated.
We discussed it, we don't quite have a, there wasn't quite enough to do this and that, and the question had arisen in our discussions, because I had them in there, about the, eh, the possibility of putting a new school and the additional parking, eh, eh, because it appears that this may be the, the highest priority, a new WI up at, at Bird Campus. If indeed we do that, it, it wasn't feasible, of course, the, the whole parking scheme would change fairly dramatically, we don't know where the school would be. So there was a discussion and I said, let's do this one and then we'll further discuss, see how this whole thing shakes out before we do anything additional ever as it relates to parking at Robert C. Bird.
Well, okay, I understand that, I'm glad you just explained that, that's very informative. Eh, my other question is, is I believe we don't do any at all, but if we do, it should be up there, if we're going to spend that money, it should be up there. And I know we keep on saying that's a priority, but even as a priority, even if it was accepted, it wouldn't even be submitted until next December. So you're basically talking about three years.
More than that.
Three, four years before anything will happen.
No, you're right on that.
And, and we can't keep on saying in our mind, oh, it's three, you know, we're getting a, we're looking at building a new one, when we have four years of students and teachers and everyday education going up there. That can't be discounted, their safety and.
There's so much parking at Robert C. Bird, it's unbelievable.
Well, I don't even care about that now, because he just made a lot of sense, he made a lot of sense.
If you look in their parking lot.
He doesn't.
Their student parking lots, no ways near got the cars in it that it used to have. Cause I used to do traffic control before and after school with the student parking and then the faculty's got that gigantic parking lot and they don't park in it, they park all the way around the building, which I've always been opposed to. But you know what? That's water under the bridge, they're going to park where they want to park and all, so that big parking lot's available. And then the parking lot up at the tennis court's available, so, you know.
I also think this is a very good time for us to, to, to sit down with the new city council and come to some agreement, eh, with our school systems here. Cause I don't feel we were on the right page before and I think this is a time to sit down and say, hey, you guys own these lots, they're just sitting there, why don't we work together to create parking? Eh, eh, and, and I think that's something we should do instead of just throwing a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars back here when it's not required yet.
So does the city of Clarksburg, do they own that lot above there, is that?
No, that's a private individual.
And they won't, they won't.
Well, Jimmy, we've, we've discussed that, about that feasibility and, and we're going to continue to explore that, because then that would be, eh, eh, it would be.
A straight shot.
A straight shot, see, that's what I'd like to see is a straight shot.
And that's what I, that's my goal, it would be a straight shot.
Listen, I think it, I think at this point we're talking about different things, so I think we should call for the vote on this and, and, and let it go out the way it needs to go out, um.
How about you just see if they can get access, if they come, eh, if they get the access, play it back.
That's a different piece of property, so, eh, there's a motion on the table, at this point in time, I'll call for the vote, eh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries, three to two. And I would recommend that, eh, Dr. Manchin, get with you later to talk about those other pieces of property from the city council.
Yeah, cause I would, I would love to see all the way up and down.
Well, we would too, there's been some discussion, Jimmy and I have discussed that, in fact, when we went up there that way, eh, you and I, eh, eh, the, the people, that would make it one continuous between the board of education and there. Eh, we're going to, we're going to continue to explore this, that's a good point.
Alright, that brings us down to personnel matters, is there a person, is there a motion to accept the personnel matters as presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to accept, Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion, is there any discussion?
The only thing I, only thing I questioned on it was, eh, where people have to be on for jury duty, there was two people that was for four weeks and then there was one, I think it was for three months.
It's federal, federal would be the three months.
I think eh, in the future, if it's four weeks, it's eh, whatever court it's going to be in, if you, eh, put a little notice.
Stipulate.
Circuit, yeah, stipulate and then the other, because I kept thinking, if these people are going to be there for four weeks, this person.
I don't think they're going to have to.